Good evening and welcome to the H U U S D School Board Meeting for August 27th, 2025. Welcome back, everybody. This is our first meeting of the new school year. Yeah, there we go. Everybody knows each other already, so we'll just, we're gonna have kids like sort of chat about themselves a little bit, but we won't do that yet because they look so thrilled about that. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order at 6:04. There is no one here for public comment. Do you see anyone, Mike?
Order from the Waterbury Roundabout, Cheryl Casey, but no other citizens who are.
Okay. With no one here for public comment, we will be looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Pam, go ahead.
Move to approve the agenda?
Do we have a second? Bobby, all right, Bobby and Ben, second. All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
The next piece is board reports. People got our leadership report today, which was just the bare bones as we are, as Grady just pointed out, just getting going. These mics do seem to be working way better, I must admit.
Agreed.
Yeah, you can hear us.
Big time.
That's great. Okay. Does anyone have any questions about the leadership report? Okay.
Nope.
Okay, I'm just checking there. Okay, so, so we will hear from the students. Basically, just because we have some new people, please introduce yourselves and tell us a couple of things. First of all, there must be something you know about that's people are talking about. Grady did mention that the state law for phones is coming in pretty soon. And we're interested what people are talking about and what you are particularly doing this year. That's maybe a little different than last year or special that we might be interested in. Can we do that? Cashel, why don't you lead off?
I'm a senior and I'm excited to start applying to colleges. I have no idea what's going on in Harwood. I haven't been yet. This is my first time in the building since last year, but first day of senior year tomorrow, exciting.
Woo hoo. I'm Grady. I'm also a senior here. I do know some Harwood happenings, even though the school hasn't really started yet. I know fall sports, the preseasons have been happening, so the actual sport's gonna pick up soon. The freshmen had their first day today, so they got the data, just explore the building and get to know it before everybody else came in. My sister's a freshman, so it's pretty exciting. With me, same as Cashel, just working on college applications, keeping grades up.
I'm Charlotte. I'm a junior this year. Some happenings with me, is it on? Okay, um, some happenings with me is I'm the team manager of the girls varsity soccer team. And along with that, which is kind of interesting this year, very different from last season, the fields, both the top and the bottom are in very poor condition. So there's lots of talk about having no home games this year or having home games at GMVS possibly. But the fields, we cannot play on them. Like this Saturday, we have a game versus Colchester, and we had to be moved to away. So that is definitely something, yeah.
It's been a very dry summer, as everyone knows, which has impacted the fields. And, you know, we operate on the well, so we were not able to water our field. So when you're dealing with natural turf, it creates a lot of issues. And I know our athletic director has checked other places and other schools are in similar situations. Not everyone, but many, many are in similar circumstances.
I'm Emma. I'm going to be a junior as well, and I'm the one woman show of the golf team. So, ooh, our golf courses are also probably like the soccer fields, very dry, very hard to play on. And if you dig your club into the ground, it's gonna be an issue.
Thanks, you guys. And yes, I golfed last week and it was bleak. I mean, it's just like dust clouds and no fun. All right, next up on the agenda is the superintendent's report and goals for 10 minutes.
Well, I'm gonna postpone a little bit because we'll do a little round robin of the opening of school, which is the, the report I'll give today. But I did post the goals that we discussed at the retreat, and there's no modifications to them. So unless there's any questions, we will put them as written on the next board agenda for adoption.
I know, I'm sorry, that was mean to me. I'm like, hey, and over to you. Are you cheering? Does anyone have any questions for Mike about his goals or anything else, actually? Dan does.
I have a question about the goals. I'm curious, at the end of the year, how do we review against these goals to see whether they were met? They seem pretty open ended.
Of the advisory groups, I would say is a very clear cut, we're gonna put together advisory groups. We're gonna have advisory groups. We're gonna have some public sessions. So I think that's a very clear and measurable, measurable goal. And then the other piece is we have work to do, which you'll hear throughout the year on, you know, our continuous improvement plan and other work, curriculum work that we'll be sharing with the board. So again, it's open ended in that we're not saying we're gonna have 90% of, you know, curriculum revised by X date, but there will be updates and reports. And I think that's an important goal for not just the board, our administration and our teachers, but for the community, because one of the pieces we've been talking about as a team is the fact that one of the challenges that we've had as a state, going back many years, but just if we look back to Act 46, Act 46, did some voluntary mergers across the state. So if you just take a look at our district, we went from six towns, five boards, the high school board. And that required then unification, a lot of work in just the first two years to put systems in place. And then we hit COVID and a lot of the, the pieces of looking at curriculum with Shannon talks about it. We're had, by, by default and by necessity, we're put on hold. One of the challenges, in my opinion, with Act 73 is it creates more questions of what should we do moving forward? If, if we're gonna be combined with other places. And I think one of the challenges is the state that I don't think our, our state leaders think about is that that impacts the work that boards do, that schools do, the administration does. So we've taken the position that we're gonna move forward as if we're, you know, Harwood Unified Union School District in perpetuity, and we're gonna do the necessary work that has to be done. So it's a long answer to the question of, you'll, you'll have reports and information and updates from us that will show that that's moving forward.
Anybody else? Okay. Lisa. CFO report?
I just have a couple of brief updates. I'll have my written report at the September 10th meeting, where we'll update also our maintenance reserve capital projects that we were, and the status of those that we completed over the summer. So just a quick update on finances. We have not closed out fiscal year 25 as of yet. We're in the trial balance period. Believe it or not, we are still getting invoices and trying to close out fiscal year 25. We do have our auditors coming next week. They'll be on site for three days next week, going through all of our finances. And we've uploaded a lot already ahead of time during the pre-audit for them. Just a quick update on ESER, our outstanding ARP ESER reimbursement. We are owed still $501,400, uh, $501,405, $405,000. We have not gotten a denial yet. There are still many districts that are outstanding in this reimbursement. We completed all of our expenses during the project period. The project period ended September 30th. We had to submit our closeout report and we were, so we're still waiting for the reimbursement. We had to submit a late liquidation report, which many of us did. And with all of this changes going on federally, we're in this kind of holding pattern right now. So the good news I have is we have not been denied. And there's no news. So that's good news, but if we do get denied, there is an appeal process to go through. And I am working with Cassandra Ryan at A O E. And we've also been working with Senator Sanders' office to be able to push this forward and get our reimbursement. So we are still on the hook right now for over $500,000 in expenses that we've laid out for the ESER projects. We, you know, we completed all of our plans during that project period. So it's just getting that last reimbursement. Just also wanted to give you a couple of updates on facilities. We have closed out the claim for our July flood, July 24th Cross at Brook flood. The total expense of that was $283,874. We were completely reimbursed except for our deductible on our Cross at Brook July flood claim. Our Cross at Brook March 25th flood claim, we're still working on that. That total expense exceeded $543,000. So we're still working on closing that out with Vizbit. The high school trail damage claim, we were not covered under our Vizbit policy. We had to then apply to FEMA. That was over $50,000. We are still working with FEMA since July of 2024 to get that approved. That's in a holding pattern. We have not been denied, but we have not been approved yet. And the last claim that I'm still trying to finalize is More Towns July 24 flood. That flood exceeded $1.4 million because that was a second flood within six months. If you recall, we had a flood in December. Prior to that, we were then transferred over to the National Flood Insurance Program. They became our primary insurance holders. We, under that, we had two categories, category A for property of $500,000 and category B for personal belongings, which would be supplies of, and that category totaled $380,000. We have exhausted the property side of that category A. So now we're, we've submitted through Vizbit and Travelers for they're our secondary insurance carrier. And we are trying to work, we are working with them to settle that claim and to be able to have that all settled. We are having no issues right now. They're just going through everything and vetting everything. So that total for that flood was over $1.4 million. And I'll have an update as we close that. We're almost closed out with that. That's just a quick update. I'll have more at my, on the September 10th meeting regarding facilities. Does anybody have any questions? Oh, one last thing, I'm sorry. I, I'll do it now rather than the highlights of the start of school. I just wanted to let everybody know for our opening session for our staff, Harwood actually had a sewage backup and for our staff opening. So that was, we immediately dispatched G W Savage to clean that up. We're working with Vizbit for that claim. There was, there were some damages to supplies in terms of uniforms, equipment, bags, our AED dummies, our five dummies were damaged. We just threw them all out, but minor damage. And that was due to, believe it or not, rusty pipes in Harwood. So just a quick update on that. It took three days to clean that up. That's it for me. Any questions?
Steve has a question. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, thanks. I thought we had gotten the $500,000 for ESER funds kind of cleared up already through Senator Sanders' office. Was that kind of premature?
No, actually, what happened was, and I thought we had sent an email out to the board. We, that first batch that came out happened to be very close to the number. There is two buckets that fall under late liquidation. The normal process to be able to spend money beyond your project end period is called a late liquidation process. Those that, was it 17 million, I believe it was, those school districts that still had construction projects that weren't completed, they were asking to continue to spend those dollars beyond the project period. We fall in the administrative bucket category of late liquidation in terms of submission of the final report. There was several school districts, I know at least six school districts that fell under that bucket. Unfortunately, we were not approved in that first number of 17 million. It was some confusion with Senator Sanders' office and A O E, and it went out, some miscommunication went out. So that first bucket of those school districts that continued on with construction projects, not all of them were approved, but some of them were approved to get, to move on with those monies. And those monies were allocated to them and then reimbursed. We fall into an administrative bucket and there's, so we're still waiting to be able to, even though we did everything right, our programming went for academics and summer programming. We expended everything by the project period. It's the late final closeout report. And so we're just in a waiting period. So hopefully we'll have more information on that. No news is good news right now.
And it was no fault of Senator Sanders' office. It was just, there was a lot of information coming out. And Lisa said that number was very close to what was submitted. So the assumption was that they were all approved and they were not, but they are. I just received another update from Senator Sanders' office two days ago on Monday. They are still really working hard on our behalf and other districts' behalf. He said, because many of these expenses are related to summer and academic programming, we are hopeful that they will approve your application. He said that Senator Sanders has called Secretary McMahon on the issue. They deny the application, then we can appeal the decision. And that Senator Sanders will continue to do all he can to bear pressure and encourage the process to move forward. So we're getting good support. It's just, we would like to have this completed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're next moving on to discussion. We have highlights and start events.
We're gonna do a little round robin with this, and I'll introduce that today was the first day of school. And I would say overall, it was a very smooth start. I was able to hit all buildings. I started at Warren and ended my day at Cross at Brook. And there were a lot of smiling faces this morning, some, some tired looking faces, but happy faces. We'll see how our, our student representatives here feel tomorrow on their first day. But, but Harwood went very well as well. They have, this was the day that they have seventh graders and ninth graders in the building. And all reports I received were very good. We, the, the only challenge we had was, for those of you who are in Waterbury and Waterbury Center, you know very well that the bridge project has taken longer than anticipated. We, we had checked and then they were hoping to open it yesterday. We got word late yesterday afternoon. So we had to make some modifications to the schedule this morning. They were still hoping to get it paved and opened today. When we checked around noon, it was still not open, so we made the decision that we were going to also wait. As I was walking into the meeting, Dan Sergeant let me know that our buses finally all got home. There was a lot of holdup this afternoon due to traffic. Again, not, not issues related to our bus transportation, but more related to the closure of that main artery through Waterbury as well as the backup that's caused. So we had a bus that was, I heard from Dan, and then I also got a, a report from Dan about the time the meeting started. He said, our secondary routes in Waterbury were incredibly delayed by a traffic jam in Waterbury Village. Bus five was most significantly delayed by nearly an hour. We transferred half the students to a second bus, split the route to expedite the completion. And all buses for, for, all except bus five were empty no later than 4:30. Bus five students were delivered by about 5:30. So it's, it's two hours after dismissal. It's a very late time. So we are hoping for things to improve in the next few days. But there's, there are issues that are out of everyone's control. So I think everyone's trying the best we can and hopefully we'll have some better news in the coming days. So with that, we're gonna do a little bit of round robin. Lisa went for her finance piece. We'll go with John, Mandy and Shannon.
Thanks, everyone. Welcome back. I don't have a lot about the, today specifically. I was in Fiston this morning and things seemed to go well. But I'm thinking about some things that I'm looking forward to this year. As some of you may recall, last year I talked about finding some consistency in the district around the way we provide reading intervention to students. And we were able to train all the special educators and reading interventionists. I'm looking forward to building on that this year. We're going to include a training on some spelling intervention to help support that model a bit. And then the other thing that is nice is the Rivers program. I'm hoping I'm not stealing Mandy's thunder here. Was really successful last year at Brookside, and we are expanding it to start at Cross at Brook this year as well. Yep, so those are my two quick things.
Stole my thunder. Does that mean I don't have to talk? I was actually thinking about this on my car ride over here, like what I was gonna share. I think there's a lot to share, but I'm gonna keep it brief. I will share that this summer, the admin team kind of split up the work in a different way, that there's always work to be done. And we set up some summer work groups that were really successful. We got some work that we were able to, proposals done that we were able to kind of present at the retreat. We spent two days together as a full admin team in August, which was great. So I wanted to share that because I think that it's a lot of work when in the summer and we were able to move a lot of things forward. And there was one other thing. I was like, I should share that. Yeah, probably that's, that's it. John said earlier I should share about branching minds, so I'm going to. So we adopted, before I even had my current position, Shannon had the wonderful foresight to know that we were gonna need, I was gonna need help in this work. And so we, we have a platform, an MTSS platform that we use called Branching Minds. And I am happy to report that we are increasing our users and have a really high percentages of teachers who are looking at the platform, looking at student data, talking about data. And it really just helps the MTSS system at large work in a better way. So I'm pretty excited about that. And that wasn't necessarily something for the first day, but I did get emails this week about, about information like, like, how do I find this? And how do I get my kids to show up? And so I know that people are using it, which is pretty cool. So I'll stop there.
Good evening, everyone. A highlight that I'd like to share is this was our third year of offering an orientation for all new staff, including support staff and licensed staff. This year for licensed staff, we expanded our orientation from one day to two days, which based on feedback I've received from those folks, worked very well. The first day is with all staff and we run them through a lot of nuts and bolts. We go over a lot of things related to them being an employee, like how to fill out a timesheet, how to access our, a variety of our systems, how to be appropriate in your email, those types of things. And then the second day for teaching staff is they were in, and all, everybody's together at Cross at Brook. We're in the cafeteria, so it's everybody. And Mandy helps me with a lot of that as well. The second day for teachers, they were in their buildings, getting a lot of one-on-one time with their building principals. And that allowed them just time to settle in, kind of like what we do here at Harwood. We give time for the freshmen to arrive on their own to settle in before everybody else comes the following day. And so we did that for our new staff this year and I got some very positive feedback from that.
Hey, thanks, guys. Does anyone have questions for any of these folks? Sure, go ahead. Yes, it really is. Go for it.
Like me to want to say more, but we all, I just want to also say, we had a really great in-service. So we had a split up, we had four days of in-service total, but we started all together. Dr. Mike started with the address. Ashley, you were there. I know a couple of other folks were there. But Mike, you have a good way of like starting us off on the right foot. Just have a large impact on their students, really, like helps, is helping me have a goals in mind around our SEL work and whatnot, emotional learning work. Fun, and I just want to put that out there. Like, we were able to have fun as a whole, a whole group. And we played a game. Duane always makes everybody laugh and he kicked us off with some laughing. And I just want to put out there, it was, it was the right way to start this year. So it was great.
It was a game show and there were some special prizes. Actually, someone won the kitchen sink, literally, so.
Add on to that, I was at the opening day of school and Mike promised to make, he started by saying that he would make us, wasn't gonna make a speech to make people cry because last year and the year before, people cried. Everyone cried. Actually, the Mr. Rogers one was a real crier and the Tony Bennett. So then he, he wrote a speech and we all cried. So it didn't work. That part did not work, saying. But it was, I will say, I was also inspired. The speech was really about a student who has now grown referring back to the people that supported him and believed in him and made him become. So I it's quiet right now. So anyway, so that was that. That is highlights. Does anyone have any questions or anything to add? Okay. Next, we're gonna talk about, a little bit about the status of the TruX building evaluations.
And I, I can share a little bit, and Lisa and I will jump in too, that the assessments are complete. That work was done over the summer, went very well, very smooth. We had heard from our architect firm and they are receiving now the actual cost estimates. They expect to have them all by next week. They're gonna need to take about a week and a half to go through and just review in detail all the numbers, kind of scrub the data to make sure everything is accurate and complete. And then they are setting up a meeting with Lisa, Ray and me. I think it's right around September 15th. So we, we will have, we, we will have JV, we're in the rest of the, you know, the Building Use Committee, schedule a meeting so that we can then, after we, we are certain that those estimates look appropriate. We'll set up a meeting and then have that public meeting on that and have the committee review and discuss next steps and recommendations. So that's coming along. Anything else to add, Lisa?
Glad that Cindy and I put out, I'm sure you saw it, attached to the agenda, a little piece of PR with Steve's help about the fact that we don't really know what's gonna be happening with Act 73. So if everyone read that, it did go in the roundabout today and it'll be on Front porch forum. But then we'll move on to that. Act 73 redistricting committee has met twice. Take it away.
They've met twice. I have not been able, one time I was out of town. I have not, and then last week we had in-service, so I was not able to attend the meetings, but they are live streamed, they're recorded. And just from speaking to some people who are involved in the process, the first two meetings were really a lot of And just from speaking to some people who are involved in the process, uh, the first two meetings were really a lot of. Get, you know, getting to know you, goals, uh, processes. So not much work has been done to this point. Uh, they are to provide up to three recommendations, one of which is a recommendation that incorporates supervisory unions. Just my own assessment of that process. And I think sometimes in legislation that we see very optimistic and quick timelines. And processes like this from my own experience last year with the Commission on the Future of Public Education are. It takes time for anybody to get to know each other, to develop working relationships, especially when it's a group that only meets periodically. That people have other full-time jobs. So, um, I, I think they're going to be, I think it's going to take a lot of work for them to get those recommendations out. But I think they have some good leadership. The, the, the one co-chair is a state representative and she is also the board chair at Mount Mansfield. So she has a good background. She's the state rep. And then Senator Martine Gulick, who has been here is also a very strong public education person. So I think, I think they have some good people. What they come up with will, is, we'll have to see what they come up with. One of the challenges I, as I talked, as I share with people, but also as people will share with me. There are some districts, there are some areas that are very large. Uh, and then you have, uh, school districts like Harwood. Where you have two hundred and forty square miles, uh, the Green Mountains on either side. A, a non-operating, uh, some non-operating school towns to the south of us and another supervisory union. To the north, the probably the closest high school is Stowe High School, which, uh. I, I, with, is a small high school. You have then to the, kind of what the north east, you have schools that are talking. There, there has been a report released on Washington Central, U thirty-two and Montpelier on some of their possibilities. So. I, I, I think it's from what I hear from other people as well, that it's going to be challenging to figure out where we would fit into that big puzzle. I think that's going to be, uh, similar situations across the state. Uh, added to that, I, I don't see. The one piece that's not being discussed in the legislation, other than one reference, which assigned a job to the commission. The, the cost savings aren't going to be in putting districts together. In fact, I believe, uh, that will actually increase costs when you look at the impacts of collective bargaining agreements. Where you get, what is discussed outside of the formal meetings and outside of legislation is closing schools and cutting staff. And that is not being discussed. And I think that is being down the road to, uh, newly formed districts. And I don't think we're going to. So I think it's going to be a very challenging process in the years ahead and the one, one that we have to pay very close attention to. That's my, that's my opinion on that topic.
Does anyone have any comments or questions? Go ahead, Bobby.
Vermont Public is actually covering, um, our schools the next several weeks and kids at all different grade levels. And they, it's on the Michaela, her show, I guess, whatever the, I caught it yesterday. Can everybody hear me? This, yeah. Good. Okay. And, um. You know, I was curious and I, I was listening to hear what they were saying. I think there is an acknowledgement and it is that. Board member who's on, who's the representative. You know, talking about, we have to really look at, is this really a savings? Because it will cost money to improve schools. And there's no money in that fund right now. And, um, and additionally, the idea of the transportation. Is going to add expense. So there's not necessarily a saving. So I was relieved to hear that. There'll be a lot of voices at the table. Do you have any sense? There was a superintendent there, uh, or a retired superintendent, you know?
The retired superintendent from the, our interest interstate school district, uh, and I know him well. He's, he's. There's a couple of retired superintendents. Another one was, uh, you know, I think a state senator for a while, a long time from honor. But the one that, that I think you're referring to, he actually also moved from Pennsylvania. He was the superintendent of the Erie School District in. Northwestern Pennsylvania, a large school district, ten to twelve thousand students. So. He has idea, he has understanding of scale and, uh, he, he just retired in June.
You might not have an answer, but you might have an idea. So if we, if we're not able to connect physically with another. District to merge, is there a chance we'll be in that? There's one in the Northeast Kingdom and there's one in Southern Vermont. There's one here and they'll try to link those and drive us super crazy or.
I have no idea.
I just can't put, I can't figure how, what even is an option for us. So. Um, okay. So we're going to move on to our action items. I am trying to be better about asking people if they have questions and going slower because I tend to rush and then miss important things. So I'm really working hard to not do that right now. So, uh. These are, these policies, um, I hope everyone took a look. I know there's a lot there. Um. These are for adoption. So Mike, you want to talk about those?
For this is our Vermont terms, our policy hearing. And, uh, if, at this point, it feels like ancient history. But we had our first reading of the policies back at the end of May. And then, uh, there was not enough time to properly warn. The items between the last meeting in May and the first meeting in June. And then of course, our second meeting in June is, is a retreat and not a voting meeting. So, uh, these are items that were reviewed. We spent a good time on them discussing, going through them. Uh, I will say that, uh. We are, we, once, uh. Former board members Tori and Danielle did a hard work of spending a year going through all the policies. And we updated all the policies in a very short timeframe. We have been trying to, um, keep up with what's released from the School Board Association. And in August, they released four new revised policies. So they are also coming due. And in addition, uh, the Vermont Agency of Education is charged this year with developing a model policy for cell phones. And that's one that this board wanted to do last year. Decide, the board decided to kind of hold to see what happened in the legislative session because. I think the, the, the general feeling was we didn't want to go through the process of creating a custom policy and then have the state say. Here's the model policy and that's exactly what's happening. So at some point this year, we will also have. Another, uh, another policy to, to review. So with that. I, 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 we don't have to read every single policy, but I'll just kind of talk through. Go down the list of the policies and then if there's questions, we can pause and open them up and take a look. Uh, so the first one is personnel recruitment, selection, appointment and background checks. The second one is alcohol in drug-free workplace. The next one is pupil policy or pupil privacy rights. Uh, the next one, and there, there was a committee that actually worked on this. It's the local wellness policy. It's, you know, it's a required policy. Uh, our wellness committee and, uh, Ben Clark served as the board member on that committee. Uh, met with that one. Any, any questions or comments on the wellness policy? That was a pretty in-depth. Policy. Mandy was, Mandy kind of leads that committee with Shannon. Uh, the next one is behavioral threat assessment teams. And that is another required policy that was required, uh, legislation two years ago. Uh, it was supposed to be, the, the draft policy was supposed to be released. December twenty twenty-four by the Agency of Education and they were not able to do that until twenty twenty-five. So. That process, those teams take effect. We have a team in place, a district level team and school teams, uh, that have been trained. So that. That's another important policy. Uh, next one, selection of library materials. Uh, the next one is community engagement and vision. Selection of and access to instructional materials. And, uh, part, there, there, there was, I know a question, uh, one board member had that I'll bring up. I think it was a really good question of. Should we have some tighter pieces in place with that? If there's, there's objections and that was something that was addressed to superintendent. So if you read that policy, there's a lot of, you know, the, the, the district will, uh, you know, develop essentially. I'll pull it up. The district will. We'll operate one here. Address selection, access to instructional materials in alignment with state standards. And then I, what I had said is that, uh. The wording used is that, uh, they are in alignment with state standards and they will respond to requests for reconsideration instructional materials. So that one, there is a process in place on making sure there are, it's a pretty tight policy on. Issues that there are any concerns with that. But there are also other policies that also refer to state standards. And educational quality standards that, uh, that we have no choice on that, that are musts. Because they are responding to state adopted standards. Uh, some of them include topics of equity and other pieces that we must. Address in our curriculum because we're required by the state and state law to do so. So I feel very confident in those areas that, that, uh. Uh, if, if there were challenges, our response would be we must do this by, by state law and, uh, we must adhere to the state standards adopted by the. State Board of Education. Special education, that was an update. Uh, there, there were just some minor wording changes in that policy. And then, uh, the last two policies are policies for deletion. The personnel file really is, is considered in, um, personnel recruitment, selection, appointment and background checks. So the School Board Association doesn't feel that's a necessary policy anymore. And then the school and community relations is addressed in their revised recommendations for, um, community engagement and vision. So any questions in general or, uh, anything else?
The, the policy that I looked at most closely was the first one that, and I was, uh, interested in how this works with the diversity and inclusion. It said the, the board seeks to strengthen recruitment of educators within historically excluded groups. And then, but then later kind of says it will not privilege anyone based on, so it kind of reworks, I think. Diversity, inclusion, but still allows for it. Is that my correct reading?
I think it's, it, it, I think it's a good weaving of the current, you know. Really because of a Supreme Court decision, they had to carefully reword that, but it's still a goal. We want to have. A diverse staff that reflects our students. So that is a priority, but we have to make sure that we're choosing. Best, are the best candidates. And, and, you know, sometimes when I describe how you go through candidates, you take a look at what the position is and, and. Selecting the best candidate isn't always a, you know, a very clear cut. This person, sometimes you, you elevate different criteria in the selection. And, uh, so I think it's, I think it's a reasonable and, and good rewrite. To meet with the current law and case law is.
Dr. Mike, um, is there a legal difference between the word recruitment and the word? Uh, I guess, hi, well, um, selection?
Right. Recruiting is, is putting kind of casting the net out large and out, kind of at, at large and bringing in as many qualified candidates as we can. Which has become increasingly difficult, uh, for many reasons. The, the pool of. Licensed teacher candidates has been dwindling, uh, for many years. In fact, I was, I was at a meeting, uh, earlier today when I was at Harwood with. Matt Henson, who's a social studies teacher, has a role in fellowship and is the president of the Harwood Unified Education Association. And he was talking when he was hired, I think it was two thousand and one or two thousand and two. When I was hired as a teacher, long before that, even before that. There were, Matt said in this district, there were over a hundred and twenty candidates. Uh, if, if we cast the net large now, uh, I would say we would be fortunate if we had ten candidates, licensed candidates. And that is a crisis, not just for our district, not just for Vermont, but it's a trend that we're seeing nationwide. So. But then the, the, the selection is how do you take those candidates and what's your criteria? What's your selection process to actually choose the, you know, the finalists? But, but great, great question.
Any other questions? Dan, go ahead.
On G five, community engagement and vision. I'm not, we obviously have a vision, which is a rigorous and innovative educational experience, yada, yada. But what are we doing to measure against that? We've talked about this a couple of times, I think last year. And maybe I'm just not clear, but do we actually have any metrics that show whether we're heading towards that vision or not?
I'll, I'll look to Shannon because a lot of, a lot of the metrics we use are in our district level and our, uh, school level now. Continuous improvement plans that the board also ratified at the end of the year. Shannon?
Thank you. Um, so yeah, so just kind of building off of what, um, Dr. Mike was just saying. Every school has a continuous improvement plan, which is aligned with that district vision. And then within that plan. We have, uh, identified what measures they're going to use. And we're actually, uh, at an upcoming admin team meeting, are going to be mapping out, um. Specific checkpoints throughout this year where we're going to stop and we're going to look at that data that we have. So we're essentially doing like our own progress monitoring. And then the, and then at the end of this school year, twenty-five, twenty-six, we'll be able to look at how we did. Based on what our goals were. So I'll give you an example. I'm going to get kind of in a little bit more weedy than what that vision statement says. So, um, all of our schools want kids to know how to read. And so each of our schools has set a reading goal to the tune of something like by the end of twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Eighty-five percent of all third grade students will be on grade level for reading. And we have assessments that will measure that. And we actually have a, a very pretty robust assessment plan. With assessments that are given to all students. And then we have an additional layer of assessments that are given to those students. I'm going to use the term who flag. On those universal give to everyone assessments, we can drill down a little bit deeper so we can identify what their needs are. And, um. And so that is something that we're going to be, um, intentionally focusing, focusing on this year. Metrics are going to include our VT cap scores. We use a universal screener in grades K through three called Dibbles, which measures many different areas of reading. Um, and so we'll be looking at that three times a year. We also have another, uh, assessment called Star Three Sixty. Which measures other components of reading as well as math. And then, um, like I mentioned, we have several of those sort of second tier assessments that we only use on those students. Who we've identified, um, as needing more assistance based on those first, like tier one assessments, I'll call them.
Maybe I just needed this to, uh. Simplify it a little bit. I'm wondering specifically about the community. How does the community know how we're doing on those?
Uh, so, um, the continuous improvement plans are going to be, they're not yet. That's on my to-do list for next week. They're going to be posted to our website and also to all of the schools' individual websites. And part of those plans is, um, sharing data with the community. So we will be collecting that data and then we will be, uh, making it accessible publicly.
Thanks, guys. All right. So we are gonna make a motion to put these for adoption at our next meeting. This is it. We're doing it. Okay. We're adopting these goals. That's right. All right. So we're, um, we're gonna do a roll call vote and we'll include the students and away we go. Or we could just do the whole. Does every, does anybody? Are there any abstentions or no votes? Um, does anyone want to vote no? Are there any abstentions or no votes? Does anyone want to vote no on this? Yeah, we need a motion. Thank you, Pam. Lost me. Oh, the motion's on the board. Somebody please read the motion.
I'd like to read the motion.
Go for it. But you can just say D one, D eight. You don't have to, unless you really want to, Ben.
I would like to motion as listed, as written. D one through.
G ten.
G ten, uh, for adoption.
Do we have a second? Corey seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
That aye from every, let me just look at Zoom here.
Aye.
Aye from Steve, Rebecca.
Aye.
And Jonathan, I don't see him.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, that will pass unanimously. All right, next in action items, sorry for my brain cramp. Oh, yeah, the next is for, we're going to approve to delete the last two. So she's got a, Cindy has a different tally. Okay. Will someone please read the motion? Someone? Dan, go for it.
Um, I move to delete D five and H one L.
Second. Pam seconds, Emily seconds. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. We've got one more. We're gonna, we, we lumped these two together. Support staff negotiations are back again. And JB was very successful in his work with the teachers and keeping that negotiation short, fruitful, positive. I have asked Pam, Cindy and I have asked Pam to join him as his fellow negotiator. And we're looking to have everyone affirm that. And then also, I, we are going to reestablish the Public Outreach Committee with Steve Rosenberg as the chair. And other people are welcome to, if they are interested in joining that committee, you can talk to me and Cindy in an email and we can talk about that and do that at a next meeting if other people are interested. And you can also reach out to Steve to learn more about it and see what that's, if, if, if you have the bandwidth. So could someone please make that motion? Oh, you've got him on separate, that's fine. How about the first one? Rob, do you want to read that? Yep, the support staff.
I make a motion that we approve the Support Staff Negotiation Committee and affirm appointment of JD, JP, sorry. And Pam. I can't read the rest of it. My, as the board negotiation.
Team.
Team on the table.
Good, like, you know what? Yeah, negotiation on the table. All right, Deon, go. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it. Uh, Rob makes a motion to affirm JB and Pam as the Board Negotiation Committee per Board Policy B four for the coming staff negotiations. Do I have a second? Emily seconds. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then now we're going to do Steve. Yep, so we are definitely going to be doing public outreach. Being good communicators is a goal we all have. It makes things go better, it makes the work smoother and hopefully keeps the community more informed. So we're going to reestablish that committee and right now it's just Steve at the helm and then we'll add people as we move forward. But can I have a motion? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I, I think at the first meeting of the committee, a chair will have to be elected. So I don't think that should be, I, me being chair shouldn't be part of the motion. I mean, who knows? Maybe there'll be a knockdown fight for chairmanship.
You the chair? Because I can, I've appointed you, but I can unappoint you if you.
Oh, if, if, if you have the ability to appoint me, that's fine, of course.
I do have the ability.
Okay.
Few abilities. So I'm gonna flex right now and do it.
And I'll just add, if you take a look at the policy B four, board's policy B four, board committees, it says under membership that the committee chair and committee members shall be appointed by the board chair, subject to final approval by the board.
Okay, thank you.
You go ahead, ask a question, Bobby. Oh, wait. Oh, yeah, so can somebody make?
Make a motion that we reestablish the Public Outreach Committee with Steve as the chair.
Do we have a second? Bobby seconds. All those in favor? Oh, oh, questions? Discussion? Bobby?
I was just confused because I thought we did this in March after the new board was formed. I thought we reorganized because at some point, so it's already been a year since we reformed the committee. Wow, amazing. Okay, thank you.
Fun, Bobby, that it flies along. Just flies along. Undo sarcasm. I apologize. All right, so thank you, Steve, for serving in this capacity. We definitely need you and I appreciate all your editing and thoughtful writing, really. Okay, so did we do that? All in favor of Steve heading up this committee, please say aye. Aye. All right, I think that's.
Aye.
Go ahead, Dan.
Just a general question about the action items. It says that some motions may be included in the agenda while others may be crafted during the meeting. What would be an example of a motion that gets crafted during the meeting?
Well, more that, I, I don't know if we would fully craft a motion in a meeting, but we would change one or alter one if it's, if we all agree that something is not what we want to do. So they are sort of flexible right up until we approve them and you can amend them. So it, we could have an amendment right before that, right? Right before we all say aye, we could amend if we wanted to. I guess there might be some times that we might create one.
So, so Robert's rules, that, that's why you generally have the, the motion at the beginning for the adoption of the agenda. So at that point, if anyone wants to add a motion, it can be added by a simple majority vote of the board. But it, so right, right now, if, you know, if Rob wishes to establish a motion to establish a committee on the review of fiction books in the Harwood Library, that that would have to, that motion, because the agenda has already been approved according to Robert's rules, it would have to be approved by a two-thirds vote in order for that to go on the agenda. Otherwise, we'd have to wait for a vote until the next time.
Two-third of vote right then and there and add it. Okay, so you could. I get it. All right, the last, we have two things, but the last before we go into an executive session is to approve the consent agenda. That includes the minutes from six twenty-four at the board retreat. It also includes the warrants from six four, six eighteen, six twenty-six, seven sixteen, seven thirty, and eight thirteen, totaling five million nine hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. And the F Y twenty-six, seven sixteen, seven thirty, and eight thirteen, totaling one thousand four mil, one million four hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-six, thirty-seven. And that is because there was some closeout from last year and some new stuff from twenty-six.
And Lisa, I also want to thank, continue to thank our, our board members who serve on the warrant committee and Rebecca. While, while everyone was enjoying the summer, she was in the office reviewing warrants, so we, we appreciate that.
Yes, some jobs are ongoing and checking the warrants is one of them.
Just want to update everybody. We've actually now changed it to an online system. So board members serving in this role do not have to come to the central office. So we are updated and it's online. We load everything up in a Google Drive and you can sign it, go through all the invoices and you sign it. So we're, we're moving up with the times and we're also implementing this in all the schools. So the administrative assistants do not have to drive to the central office. So it saves on time and it also saves on mileage reimbursement, so.
Thanks still goes to Rebecca because she was in the office recently.
Thank you. Let's not forget that.
Great progress, Lisa. That's great to hear. Any convenient measure is always good. All right, do I have a motion to pass the consent agenda that I just read? Bobby's gonna make a motion. Do I have a second? Dan seconds. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay. That is, so that will pass, the consent agenda will pass. The last thing we're going to do is have an executive session to enter into executive session with all board members, superintendent, Dr. Mike, director of finance, Lisa Essler, for the purpose of discussing confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body. So that means, students, you may go. Thank you. And but we need a motion to, do we, we need a motion to enter into the, will someone please make that motion?
I would like to make that motion.
Do we have a second? All those in favor of going into executive session say aye. Aye. All right.
Aye.